So if you're present here today and you're in the audience, I would ask, please, that we would ask that you sign in if you haven't done so already at the podium. We'd appreciate that if you would. Thank you. Is Paul going to be here? Okay, I mean, George, excuse me. No, okay. All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City of Virginia City Council Chambers. This is a special meeting. It's actually a notice of public hearing. The City of Virginia, County of St. Louis, State of Minnesota notices hereby given that the City Council of the City of Virginia, Minnesota, will hold a public hearing Tuesday, November 26, 2024, at 5:00 p.m. in the City Council Chambers, 327 First Street South, Virginia, Minnesota, related to the proposed purchase of Pierce Velocity 100 Ascended Tower Ladder Truck with an estimated cost of $2,459 million. Actually, $2,459,979. A copy of the proposed estimate cost of a ladder truck is on file and available for public inspection during regular business hours at the Office of the City Clerk at the City of Virginia City Hall, 327 First Street South, Virginia, Minnesota, and on the city website at www.virginiamn.us. All interested persons may appear at the public hearing and present their views orally or in writing. Hereby signed Pamela Labine, City Clerk of the City of Virginia, went then to the Massaba Tribune on 11/15/2024. Pam, is there any written correspondence that was submitted to you in reference to this public hearing?
No, there was not, Mayor. But we do have one change. The notice was posted with the amount that we had of the estimated cost of the fire truck. We did receive new information, and it is in that packet right there. And the amount is $2,478,079.
So $2,478,000?
Yes, $79.
$79. So an increase from, we originally got it September 1st, now it's 5/11/1. Now it's increased?
Correct, about $18,000. And there is new information regarding the debt service as well.
Very good. Thank you. Did you have received any other telephone calls or any other method of correspondence in giving testimony or in regards to this public hearing for the purchase of the ladder truck?
No, I have not, Mayor.
Thank you. Has any city council received any information, any correspondence that has not been submitted to the city clerk?
I had by one taxpayer in their concerns on the price of the fire truck. They had planned on coming, but due to unforeseen circumstances, they won't be here.
And that email, that information was not submitted formally to the city clerk for the record? Okay, thank you. Britt, have you received anything? Okay, thank you. Okay. The cities, we have attached to this last meeting, was it the committee, the home meeting? We had a representation, George Iolson gave us some information regarding the purchase of this piece of equipment. And the public hearing is to hear from the general public to determine and see if you have any questions or comments regarding the $2,478,079 price tag for this. Just a little bit of a background. If this fire truck is, will be approved to order, it'll take between 45 and 48 months, if not longer, to acquire it. And no payment would be required until we took possession of that piece of equipment. And between the time, if this is approved, the time of approval, if approved, and that 48-month period, there's opportunities for the city to try to collaborate with other entities in an effort to try to take some grants, some other opportunities to help pay for the cost of this. Now, according to the, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Sherry, according to the presentation by George Iolson for Northline Securities, breaking it out over a 20-year period based upon the costs associated with this, it would cost the taxpayer approximately $24 a year for 20 years to pay for this. Is that correct?
For the residential property value of $100,000, that is correct. That's approximately $2 a month.
$2 a month? So approximately, and so if it's a little bit more than $100,000, it goes up incrementally? Is that correct?
That is correct. On the latest form, excuse me, that we did receive today on the annual payments, you'll see it goes up to $400,000, and that is the annual payment for a ladder truck.
So the goal and objective here is to, if approved, to budget each year a little bit for that in conjunction with any potential grants that we get to cover some of the costs associated with this, which may reduce the amount that the taxpayer needs to spend over that 20-year period. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the council first, and then we'll go to the audience if anybody has any questions. Counselor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. I was not in attendance at that meeting, but I did watch it. I did have a question regarding, I know he had talked about locking in interest rates, and then if the interest rates were reduced between now and when we lock in, we can ask for the lower rate. The one question that I had, though, and I didn't hear answered, was how much in interest over either a 15-year or a 20-year time will the city be paying or taxpayers be paying?
It appears under the new updated version that for a 15-year, the interest rate would be right around 4%, whereas if you go to 20-year, it's 3.42. So it's going to be about a horse apiece.
It's going to be what?
About a horse apiece, if you, depending on how.
I mean, the over, the interest, the dollar amount of the interest over amortized over that 15-year or that 20-year, how much in interest will we be incurring?
I will have to review it. I didn't print it on here.
I'd be curious just to see what, you know, how much of that is, is interest? And then also, if we were doing the due diligence by having the public hearing, if we move forward, we still have plenty of time to find any other partners in terms of grants or working with our lobbyist or our state legislators to try to offset the cost of this. Is that correct?
It is correct. You're hoping for grants or other donations.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Paulson. Any other questions from the elected body? Any questions or comments from the audience? Please state your name for the record, and welcome to the public hearing.
Hi, Greg Lency. So I should have probably gone to the bond meeting, but I didn't. That might have been beneficial. But my concerns are still the same. The levy that we passed last year was the highest levy ever in 20-year history by two and a half times for the levy against, for property taxes. So that wasn't $100 increments to the taxpayer. That was thousands of dollars increased on property taxes. So we've voted to increase sewer rates, water rates, the street assessments, and my concern a year ago was that the levy will not stop. It'll be ongoing every year, and this won't be the end of it. So the taxpayers, the message they're getting is that no matter how much money comes into this city, it's never going to be enough. We get $20 million a year coming through those doors right there, and we burn up every penny of it. And at the end of the year, it's not enough. So to me, this isn't about the fire truck. It has nothing to do with the fire truck. I could care. It's the dollar amount and what the impact it has on the citizens. So if the bonding company says it's $20 a month, my next question is, what else do we have to bond for? What's going on that levy that we don't know about? Is there a $500,000 ambulance on there? Where is that? That's $409,000 now. Is that going to be on there? And we need one of those every three years. So those are my concerns, the impact that it has. And are we getting all the information? Do we know? We haven't set a budget for this coming year. We haven't even hardly discussed that yet. So that's coming out. We don't know what our dollar amount is going to be there. So, and another thing that's never even come into the question is, what's wrong with the truck? To buy us time, can the truck be fixed? Is it hydraulics? Is it the engine? Is it the drivetrain? Is it the pumps? What's wrong with it? Why can't we buy some time by fixing that? I mean, if our bond is $200,000 a year, we could throw $200,000 at that truck. It would be fractions away from the total expense, and that hasn't even been discussed.
It has been discussed.
Okay.
And I, Mr. Lency, we appreciate your concerns. Welcome every comment that you have, every suggestion you have. But there has been discussion in a number of occasions about the condition of the fire truck, what needs to be done, the age of a 24-year-old, a 24-year-old truck, some of the issues they had with respect to responding truck, how long it's been down for maintenance, the inability to get parts. All that has been vetted out and discussed, and that's the reason we're here today for the public hearing, for this purpose, to determine that. So yes, we, it was discussed at length, and the budget was discussed at length. Every Monday, we had a budget meeting. We have a, set the budget in the levy on December the 10th. I think it's been well published, and people have had the opportunity to come to every one of our meetings to discuss it as well. So a decision will be made.
People aren't showing up at the meetings, Larry. No one's showing up. I'm the only one that shows up. No one's going to come to these meetings.
So they're concerned that you're, please continue with your concerns with respect to, not personally in the fire truck, but you made some suggestions or that we should...
Well, that was just one suggestion I'm sure other people have thought about, is, you know, how bad is it? It goes out every, every time it gets paged. It goes down the road to Hibbing at every fire call.
It's been down for maintenance for a long time.
Yeah, right. And we can, we could, if it was down for maintenance, there's Bilwabik, Gilbert, Chisholm, Hibbing, Greenwood, all kinds of ladder trucks around that could cover us during a downtime.
Well, I'll tell you what we'll do. If that's what you think, that we, there's ladder trucks all over the place that could come, I think we'll have the fire chief come up and explain, you know, why the ladder truck is here, why our ladder truck goes through all these fires and other departments don't have ladder trucks, so they're not everywhere.
Well, there's a brand-new one in Gilbert. I just looked at it.
And we have mutual aid.
Yeah, I understand that. So what I'm just saying is...
Stick to the issue there, and I appreciate that very much.
Have we explored every possibility for the benefit of the taxpayer to look at the purchase of this truck? Is it beneficial to defer it? If it isn't, maybe it isn't. There's always reason to justify spending the money. I've never seen that problem get bypassed at this council. It's always justified, always. I've never seen anybody not justify it here. So all I'm saying is, let's vet this out carefully and let everybody know, is there other stuff in the bonding package coming down the road that's going to change the $24 to 200, 300, 400? Right? I mean, we had taxpayers, their property taxes went up $5,000 last year, and a lot of them, 2,500, 3,000, and everywhere in between. I couldn't get out of the election booth. I was late for the meeting because some sweet little old lady had me by the arm, asking me and telling me that her property taxes were $5,000 a year. I mean, that's, I'm hearing it from everybody, everywhere I go. So if I don't say something, what am I doing? I'm not being true to myself or backing up anybody on this council that may agree with me. You know, it just needs to be said, that's all. So just saying, let's make sure we're doing the right thing and vet it out carefully, because we don't certainly need a never-ending levy of taxpayers' dollar. That levy is going to have a negative effect on this city. It's not going to increase people coming in to purchase homes, make developments, and move things along in this city. The effect is going to be just the opposite. So it's not the fire truck. It's the levy, the effect the levy is going to have on this city. We're already at the top of the heap, and everybody knows it. That's why Mountain Iron's thriving, and we're struggling with a boatload of debt, by the way. We can talk about that at next Tuesday meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lency. Okay, anyone else? Chief, why don't you come up for a moment and kind of give Mr. Lency a little tutorial on why we need to do fire truck and why we can't, why the 24-year-old fire can't be fixed, and why we can't find parts, and how long it's been down, and the fact is, what's the mutual aid issues with respect to the numerous amount of ladder trucks that are available for us to use so we don't have to buy one? Chief?
All right, so going back, ladder truck turns 21-years-old. We did do a massive refurbish on it approximately 14 to 15 years ago when I was the fire training officer. We sunk over $100,000 into it to refurbish it and bring it up two standards at the time. We do have ongoing maintenance. Our city staff down at the garage do a phenomenal job of maintaining and repairing it, which is almost weekly for repairs now. None of that, but we have to contract out because it is an aerial apparatus and does require special maintenance on the boom, hydraulics, the cable system, all of that. I tried to pull the numbers today. Finance is working on getting me the actual cost of what we've sunk into it just this year. But it has been down for a month at a time, week at a time, weeks at a time. So yeah. And there are aerials around, but one of the biggest reasons that the City of Virginia and its citizens use an aerial is because it's in our city, it's quick response with our staff, plus it also factors into our city's ISO, which is currently a three. I believe Mountain Iron resides at about seven, six to eight, maybe seven, I'm not 100% sure. What that equates to is hundreds or thousands of dollars a month or year for commercial insurance. So when companies like Target look at a city, they look at the ISO rate, because why would they go somewhere else and have to pay an extra $10,000 for property insurance when they go to a city with an ISO of three? If we lose that ladder truck, we're going to lose our ISO of three. It's required for a city of our size with our high rises, with our mid-rises, our low rises, commercial, industrial, that make up the City of Virginia, that we have an aerial of at least 100 feet tall. Gilbert's is 75 feet. Doesn't count. Counts as an aerial, but not for us. Won't get us any points. We do respond to Hibbing. Hibbing responds to us. It's a staffing issue. We just don't have enough staff for a structure fire in modern buildings. That's why we have mutual aid, box alarms with Evolith, Mountain Iron. They send firefighters to our fires, we send firefighters to theirs, i.e. our ladder But we do have a very robust maintenance, preventive maintenance program for all of our apparatus, not only fire trucks, but our ambulances, our SUVs. That's why we're running pickup trucks that are built in the 90s. That's why we're, you know, our battalion chief vehicle's a 2012 and still on the road. Our ambulances are pushing 200,000 to 300,000 miles, and they're still on the road because of our robust preventive maintenance program. There's no lack of preventive maintenance. We contract out every year for third-party emergency apparatus inspections. We get a massive list of everything that needs to be fixed. It goes to our city garage. Anything that our city garage can't handle gets contracted out to third-party, whether it's Ford, specialty emergency apparatus people, public safety.
So as you move forward with that, so with respect to the question Mr. Lency had regarding other ladder trucks that are available to respond, and we're a full-time fire department, so if we need a ladder truck and we have one available, it's an immediate response. If it's Hibbing, which is 26 miles away, they get a call there full-time as well. The time it takes to get a ladder truck over here is significant. And the fact that Gilbert has a 75-foot brand-new ladder as opposed to 100 feet, and it will not accommodate some of the buildings that we have, they have a volunteer fire department, so how long it takes to, for them to put a page out, have somebody respond to the call to pick up the ladder truck and drive it to Virginia. All those factors were discussed at length over the course of the last six months with respect to this. And you indicated to us that our, we don't have our maintenance people here that have mechanical expertise in many areas. Talk to, just a minute or so about the availability of parts for this 21-year-old fire ladder truck?
Yeah, parts are scarce, and they can take weeks to month or greater to get the parts in. Right now, we have a broken bracket on our aerial, on the boom itself. Been waiting for a part on that for over five weeks. It's not a bracket that would take the aerial out of service, but nonetheless, generally, if we need any kind of part for that aerial, you're looking at minimum a month wait, and then scheduling, waiting for a technician that's available. You know, if we have something catastrophic, that piece of apparatus could be down for six months to a year if it can even be repaired. Talking with Public Works Director, again, you know, parts are scarce, and a lot of manufacturers aren't making these parts anymore. They're moving on. They're outfitting their newer vehicles, vehicles that are 20 years plus older. You know, whatever parts were in the warehouse, when they're gone, they're gone. So now you either have to fabricate the part from scratch, which is extremely cost-inhibitory and takes a long time. And just the general wear and tear. I mean, that vehicle is 21-years-old. Council approves it, and we sign the purchase order, it'll be over 25-years-old by the time that it's replaced. Parts are difficult now. I don't, I can't imagine what parts are going to be like in two or three years trying to get them, or greater, five, six, seven years if it's not replaced. Yeah, general wear and tear. That vehicle, you know, has been in a crash. We got it fixed best we can, but again, 21-years of wear and tear on a fire apparatus, it's going to take its toll. Nothing is built to last forever, unfortunately.
So thank you. Thank you for that. So with respect to how this fits into our budget process and our levy moving forward, looking at the costs associated, what we have to do, Mr. Lency had indicated water, sewer lines, the increases in the rates are direct result of not, the city not being able to afford to do it or not choosing not to do it, not to fix the roads and streets over a 20-year, 25-year period. It deteriorated in such a manner where some action had to be taken. So when you put do these roads and streets as a part of the budget process, and we have to raise the levy, you have to raise the rates of the water, the sewer, it's because we're expending all that money that's in our enterprise fund to build new roads and streets. So, you know, once you deplete that, you have to maintain that in order to move forward. So rates have to go up in order to accommodate that, rates that are 10-years-old, rates that are 15-years-old. So those kind of things all affected into Mr. Lency's concern about the levy's going to continue to rise, 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 and we're going to spend every penny that we have. We try to spend it wisely. And if we want to buy equipment, you know, we have to figure out a way to do it. And that's the purpose of this public hearing, is to talk about what the need is, what the amortizer is, the issue's over 20-years. What's this going to cost a taxpayer 20-years? Yes, it's compounded by some of the other things, and as far as the debt levy went down for last year, so some people's property is going to go down. It's a ebb and flow. So the question is, do we want, do we want health and safety as part in our community? Do we run a roads and streets fixed? If not, then we don't raise the levy at all. Everything's fine and dandy. Everything goes down. So then we're in the same boat we were 20-years ago. So it's unfortunate that we're here in this regard. We have to talk about this. So it's good that Mr. Lency is here. It's good that you talk about, you know, the needs for that, and about the budget, and how can we afford to do this? And people are coming to see you in the voting booth, saying that, you know, this is wrong, and we're spending all this money. We're not wasting this money. We're spending it on infrastructure. We're spending on improvements to this community. And if the general public doesn't want that, then we don't spend the money, and we don't buy the equipment. We don't, we can, and sometimes compromise the public safety, health and public safety in our community. So the goal and objective here is to talk about where we're at, where you want to go, is this, is this debatable? What can we do in the next 48 months? If this is approved to order, is, in 48 months, how can we pay for it? How can we use other partners, people who use this on a regular basis? Working with the legislature? Sure, we could not do this and wait and try to find the money for it, then you order it. So say, the next legislative session, the session after that, the money's allocated. Say we get a part of the money. We got to come back for another public hearing, instead we get $500,000. And so now we have $500,000 as opposed, you know, which lowers the cost of this, you know, to 1.9 million. Where are we at? We're going to still have to order that fire truck. It's still going to be five years, 48 months down the road. It's going to cost more money for that. So we either, you know, do it or we don't. And that's the purpose of me, to vet that out. Counselor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. I do have one question since you're still up there. Did we, did you ever find out the amount if we were to have to cancel what the penalty is?
Well, I did talk to our Pierce rep, who talked to his bosses. Generally speaking, the only time that the penalty clause has been enforced is if a city cancels the purchase and moves to a different vendor. He said, in their experience and in their talks, if an organization needs to cancel the order because they just cannot afford it, they work with Pierce Manufacturing to try to get a vehicle that fits within their parameters, and they have not historically been charged the penalty. He said, that's just there so they don't say, oh, well, we decide we want to go with company X. Instead, we're going to throw your purchase agreement away.
Got it. Thank you so much. I appreciate that. And just since we are here discussing this in a public hearing, my experience is, the day before, we experienced an extreme fire on our building, which is two stories, and I'm not sure how many feet tall.
Or is, commercially, you're probably looking at 20 feet plus parapet roof, 25, 28 feet tall.
Okay, so kind of tall. Not as tall as some buildings, but the day before the fire broke out, the ladder truck was decommissioned. And so when the fire department arrived, the apparatus, it took them, I want to say, 25 to 30 minutes to get that apparatus working. And I'm not in your line of work, and I don't understand how crucial timing or critical timing is, but I would assume it's very crucial and very critical. And had the truck been working, there might have been a completely different outcome at 25 minutes. I'm not sure if that's an accurate thing to state.
Possibly, yeah.
But if somebody has to drive from Hibbing, which is a 30-minute drive, with a ladder truck to come and put out a pretty decent fire that we had going on, that's, that could be, that's a huge difference in my opinion. So I look at it from a public safety need, and I feel that this is needed. I understand other communities have ladder trucks or have access, or we would have access through those communities, through mutual aid, to those ladder trucks. But in the situation that we experienced as a business and with families and renters that lived upstairs, having that ladder truck... that lived upstairs, having that ladder truck working, I think, is crucial and very critical to our community. So it's not a matter of if I support or don't, I 100% support the purchase of the ladder truck. I feel that we need to dig really deep in terms of how we come up with funding. And I don't know if Paul Peltier is going to be here later today, but we've got this on our desk from Rams, and it's, it was an update from their lobbyist, just stating where some of the dollars from the IRRB has gone and what they've gone to fund. And there's quite a lot of dollars in there, to the tunes of maybe a couple million for trail projects and things like that. And I would assume that if we approached IRRB with some sort of a plan, along with maybe any of the mining companies that we currently service, that there may be some desire to help us out, and maybe also reaching across the aisle to some other communities. I don't know how that, I mean, I know we're still baby steps on that process, but I think it's critical that we work together as Quad Cities and in the region. But in terms of what the city of Virginia needs, I do definitely support the purchase of this. I just feel that we need to, we have to roll up our sleeves for funding. And I'm really happy to know that historically, there has been no penalty for cancellation if it's due to lack of being able to afford or being able to fund. So I really appreciate you looking into that very much.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And just a clarification, this is a public hearing. Once this hearing is over, no action is taken at the hearing. Formal action is taken at the council meeting, which is soon to follow. Counselor Johnson, then over to Counselor Motley. Counselor Johnson.
Thank you both for all the research and work you've done over the last several years on researching and keeping our equipment working. I just want to point out that this council approved building, your building, without all the financing being in place as well. So we are at a place where we're building it and it's paid for, so I'm confident that our very, that especially you, EJ, are very capable of finding grants and federal dollars to help support this as we move forward. And I think it's important that we do recognize how much teamwork there is in our communities when it comes to public safety, fire, police, ambulances, first responders. This is a critical point for all of our community, and investing in it now. We, I was reading, I'll read this again, deliveries in 45.5 to 48.5 months from receipt and acceptance of the contract. And then in little print underneath, it says, "Due to global supply chain constraints, any delivery date contained herein is a good faith estimate as of the date of this order contract, and merely an approximation based on current information. Delivery updates will be made available in final firm delivery date." So we're hoping it's four years out, not knowing what's going to happen next year or the year after. So I think it is critical we move forward on this as soon as possible, so we're at least in line to get a truck. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Johnson, Counselor Motley.
I just want to say, Mr. Lindsay, thanks for your comments and concern, I do echo a lot of them. And to Eric, chief, thank you for explaining the funding and how we can't not lose our grade, what was it, you said a three? That's actually, I learned that by you talking and telling me that today, so that's very interesting. I've always supported a purchase of a ladder truck, however, where the money comes from is concerning. I would love to see the money come from some outside sources versus instantly levying the taxpayers of Virginia, because I do think they get hit, in my opinion, the hardest on the Iron Range. I had dinner with two future mayors in this area very recently and joked around with them that they should help support for our ladder truck nicely. But in response to local communities having ladder trucks around the area, I totally agree with the frustration of some taxpayers and how, why do we all need our own ladder truck? You know, when we're so close in proximity, but you explained it well, and why Virginia needs its own ladder truck? And this is just a thought, when people were talking, what is the response time for a fire in Virginia by the Virginia Fire Department? What's the response time average?
Average response? Oh, go ahead. Talk enough.
Average response time in our city, I mean, we're pretty centrally located, right? Where we're at is five to seven minutes.
And our staff is always on staff 24/7.
Absolutely.
And this is just throwing this out in left field, and you probably don't need the exact answer, but what would be the response time if our ladder truck is down and we have to rely on Gilbert, who is on call?
Estimating, you know, plus, depending on time of day, weather.
So, so no sooner than hypothetically possibly Hibbing, who's on staff 24/7 like Virginia, possibly 20, 30 minutes, maybe more. So if your house is on fire, that is critical time lost, in my opinion, as a x-ray tech. So I want this city to look for funding elsewhere. I will support the fire truck moving forward, but I would hope it would not come. We have some years, possibly, if this moves forward, if the council greenlights this, the city has time to try to find money elsewhere, or try to cut it in half or do something. So I appreciate you speaking and you educating me this evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Motley. Assistant Chief Jonison.
Yeah, we plan to continue with searching for outside funds, whether it's mining, industrial, state, federal grants, private grants. Yeah, we're not going to leave any stone unturned in that three, three-and-a-half-year period before the truck is built. Talking with the manufacturer today, they said realistically, the earliest we can expect to see this would be January 1st of 2029. Substantial window to continue to seek funding opportunities.
Okay, thank you, Assistant Chief Jonison, Chief Henderson, thank you for that, appreciate it. So anything else that anyone else from the audience would like to add before we move to adjourn the public hearing? Anything from staff? Anything from the elected body? Counselor Freedle.
Yeah, thank you. I just want to let you guys know that I rely on your vetting this issue and bringing it forth, and we would not be at the point we're at had you not done that. So I appreciate the research you put forth, the data that you present to us, so that we can make an informed decision. These decisions are never easy. Mr. Lindsay has legitimate and justifiable concerns without question, as do all the taxpayers in this community, of which I am one. So it makes it even that much more difficult for me to make those decisions because it's going to impact my own family. But from the standpoint of public safety, I'm fully in favor of moving forward with this, with the price that we're at, and to hopefully secure that and be able to find additional funding that will supplement that, so that we won't burden it entirely on the backs of the taxpayers in the city.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen, appreciate that very much. We will use every.
The concerns too, I mean, a couple of years ago, it was $1.5 million, now it's 2.4. What's going to happen in 10 years when more apparatus, you know, down the cities, and I completely understand, and I, you know, out oblivious to it, so, thank you.
And thank you. We have a fiduciary responsibility to find any type of funding source that we can to accommodate this. It will just be the burden on the fire department, be our staff, city council, legislators, all moving forward to find the funding to pay for this, and first payment doesn't have to be made until we take possession of the property. So thank you, everybody, for your input. Thank you, Mr. Lindsay, and thank you for those who are here today. And is there any other questions, comments to be made here regarding this public hearing? If not, I will adjourn the public hearing, it is 5:40 PM. This public hearing is now formally adjourned. Thank you. Apologize for those of you who are in the audience today. We are now going to start with a regularly scheduled city council meeting. I will call this meeting to order. Today's date is Tuesday, November 26th, the time is 5:40 PM. Pam, would you please take the roll call?
Motley.
Here.
Freedle.
Here.
Paulson.
Present.
Beyondich is absent. Johnson.
Here.
Aaron Delia is absent. Cuffey.
Present. Would everyone please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll move to item 3.1 on the agenda, and I'd like to call students from Rock Ridge High School to please come forward. We have a proclamation to read, but first, if you could please introduce yourselves and your purpose for being here this evening.
Hello, everybody. My name is Kendall Colley, and I am the president of the Rock Ridge High School's DECA chapter. To start, I'd like to thank you all for having us and as being so kind to help us fulfill our chapter campaigns. I'm requesting, in requesting this proclamation designating a DECA Day in the city of Virginia, it helps us qualify to attend Thrive Leadership Academy in Orlando, Florida this coming spring. Myself, along with three other DECA members, attended this academy last year. We learned all about becoming a leader and what it takes to be an effective and positive leader. Being a part of DECA has been an important, has been, has given us amazing opportunities and helped develop important business and professional skills. Having a DECA Day is not only a great way to spread awareness, but also celebrates everything DECA has accomplished. I hope that it also is going to benefit the community by encouraging students to get involved, building connections with local businesses, and show how DECA helps prepare future leaders. Again, thank you for supporting our Rock Ridge High School DECA chapter and considering our request for a DECA Day proclamation. Your support means so much to us as we strive to grow as leaders, give back to our community, and represent our school at the Thrive Leadership Academy this spring. Together, we can continue to spread the word about DECA and make positive impact, inspiring even more students. So as I said, I'm Kendall Colley.
I'm Grace Langowski.
And we brought with us two of our members, Abby Sather and Zach Sonos.
Okay, did you get those names? The last name, please.
Zach Sonos.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you all, thank you for having us.
If you could just stay up here for a couple, just a moment or so, we appreciate that very much. Thanks for coming and thanks for attending the council meeting and to be participating in this very important venture as your chapter moves forward with doing good work for the communities. Now, I took the liberty of writing a proclamation, but we're going to be using your proclamation today, and I would like to read that for you, and just add a little bit to the end, if I may.
Okay.
Thank you. It's a proclamation of the city of Virginia. Whereas November is celebrated as National DECA Month, commemoration is designed to recognize and honor the achievement and impact DECA has on students. And whereas DECA is a career and technical student organization that prepares future emerging leaders in marketing, finance, hospitality, and management. And whereas in conjunction with National DECA Month, it is critical to highlight the Rock Ridge High School's participation in various community campaigns with the goal for members to attend the Thrive Leadership Academy and International Career Development Conference in Orlando, Florida in April of 2025. Whereas the Thrive Leadership Academy is designated to provide students with the skills and knowledge needed to succeed in business world by offering and promoting courses and workshops that explore leadership, entrepreneurship, and innovation in the areas of marketing and finance and other business-building skills. And whereas in order to qualify for the Thrive Leadership Academy, Rock Ridge High School students are required to complete several campaign tasks involving school and community outreach, among these is to promote DECA by bringing awareness to the community with issuance of a city proclamation and a class photo with community leaders. Now therefore be resolved, it is hereby proclaimed by the city of Virginia. Mayor Larry Cuffey Jr., Councilmembers Julianne Paulson, Gary Freedle, Liz Motley, Carl Bonzeli was absent, and Stephen B. Johnson, and Maya Beyondich. That is important, that is in recognition of the importance of the development of future leaders in our local communities and throughout our nation. Therefore, be it resolved, the efforts of the DECA program to accomplish this important goal, we declare Tuesday, November 26th, 2024, as DECA Day for the Rock Ridge School District Number 2909 within the city of Virginia, Minnesota. And we're going to have a photo with you here momentarily, but before, there will be some comments from the council first, and first we'll go to Counselor Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. Two things, what does DECA stand for?
I don't know the acronym for it, but again, like Mayor Cuffey said, it prepares future leaders and entrepreneurs.
Okay, I was just curious, I'd never heard of DECA before, so. And my other question is, will you be going to other local cities and asking for declarations as well?
Yep, after this, we are headed over to Gilbert.
Good, good luck, and thank you for being here, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Freedle.
DECA stands for Distributed Education Clubs of America. My curiosity question is, I know you're attending Rock Ridge High School, which is an academy, academy-style high school. Is there a specific academy to which this is attached, or that you're enrolled in, that's leading you towards an occupation or profession in a particular area of expertise?
This is more of like a student organization, so there's not necessarily an academy that's attached to it, but I know this is definitely helping me prepare to go to college. I plan on majoring in some type of business, so this has definitely prepared me to do that.
And is there a business academy that's at Rock Ridge High School, or is there a...
There possibly might be like a business segment. I know our DECA advisor, Mr. Hammer, teaches the business courses at Rock Ridge, so I don't think it's like specifically under any type of academy yet.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Colley. Counselor Motley.
No questions, I just wanted to say, thanks for coming here, I'm smiling, and you guys, the four of you keep doing what you're doing, okay?
Thank you. Thank you all for having us.
Well, we're going to have to gather for our photo, right, as required, and we're happy to do that. So if we can call upon one of our staff members, maybe we'll gather all, everybody around that's representing Rock Ridge and the council, and we'll have a nice photo taken. So do you have somebody that would take that photo and we can send it to you? Or we could have a very professional person in the audience to do that, Mr. Matt Reed.
(laughter)
Okay, if we could all gather around in front of the conference table, and we'll have a little photo opportunity, thank you. Ms. Colley? Ms. Colley? I signed the... I've signed the proclamation. If you'd like to take that with you. Okay, we'll move to item four on the agenda, which is the public forum. This is an opportunity for anybody in the audience that would like to address the council that's not scheduled to appear today, you're welcome to come forward at this time. Seeing none, we'll move to item number five, the consent agenda. The following actions, the following items will be enacted by one motion unless a council or citizen of the city of Virginia requests that the item be considered separately. Item 5.1 is the approval or corrections of the minutes of the regular meeting held on November 12th, 2024, and a special meeting that was held on the project. Item 5.4 is approved pay estimate number six to Carl Sanderson in the amount of $2,194,784.99 for the public safety project. Item five is approved pay estimate number four to Masaba Batuminus in the amount of $178,743.45 for the Silver Lake Improving Project Phase Three. Item 5.6 is approved pay estimate number five to Masaba Batuminus in the amount of $17,421.70 for the Silver Lake Improvements, again, for Phase Three. Item 5.7, approved pay estimate number seven to Casper Construction in the amount of $124,899.73 for the 2023 Street Reconstruction Project and the 10th Avenue West and 13th Street portion of that. Item 5.8 is approve the exempt permit for Whitetails Unlimited to conduct a raffle on Saturday, March 1st, 2025 at the Virginia Elks Lodge Number 1003. And item 5.9, approve the travel request for Casey or Cassie Slawinski and Hunter Levaner to attend the Drug Evaluation School on various dates in Maple Grove, Minnesota, at a total cost of $2,692, which is budgeted in the police budget. These are the consent agenda items for the council today, looking for council action.
We'll move the consent agenda as presented.
Counsel Johnson moves to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there support?
All support for discussion.
Support by Counsel Paulson for further discussion, further discussion. Counsel Paulson.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, I did miss the finances meeting, but I don't know if this is discussed, but I'm page 17, under Department of Public Utilities. Let's see. It's the youth center. Have we conveyed that property to the youth center, of the youth center, to the Lyric Center? And if so, and if not, I guess, when will the utilities transfer over?
Pam?
Thank you, Mayor. We have the paperwork ready to go, just waiting for them to sign off.
Okay, so once that's signed off, then the utilities will be the responsibility of them. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Paulson. Okay, it has been moved and supported after discussion on one of the items for the adoption of the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. Item six, appearances, item 6.1, we're proud and honored and welcome the executive director of the Range Association of Municipalities Schools, Mr. Paul Peltier, to give us some information and insights about Rams and what we're moving forward with, our legislative priorities, and the things that Rams has been working on for our area, region. And welcome, Mr. Paul Peltier. Or good evening, excuse me.
Good afternoon, good evening, and good night, I guess, Mayor Cuffy and council. Thank you, council. My name is Paul Peltier. I'm the executive director of Rams, the Range Association of Municipalities and Schools, proud to serve the 69 local units of government that make up Rams, 15 school districts, 27 cities, and 27 townships, of which the city of Virginia has been a proud longstanding member. Mayor Cuffy attends our mayor's group. Counselor Freedleeb is a board member on Rams, and city staff are well acquainted with the work that we're doing. Very happy to kind of share that as of last Thursday, Rams has locked in its legislative priorities, broadcast those out far and wide, and as we prepare for the legislative session, just want to have an opportunity to check in with you. What are the priorities of the city of Virginia? How can Rams be helpful? You know, this is intended to be a short dialogue. I see you have appearances limited to 10 minutes, so I want to make the most of that time, but also offer room for context and how can Rams be of assistance to the city of Virginia? It's nice to be back. Nice to have you here. So, we have a list of things, and we do have our legislative priorities that we're sending to our lobbyists. I know you have a lobbying group, the Costin Group, that represents Rams, and we have the Jarrett Group that represents the city of Virginia. We have submitted some legislative priorities to our lobbyists. We've also discussed our legislative priorities individually as mayor as two Rams and what we are looking for moving forward, and you've taken copious notes about that and are willing to support all the processes and our priorities as well. So, I think I'd like to touch real quickly, if I may, on one of the things that is really important, I mean, all these things, the capital investment, the bonding, of course, and those kind of things are important on the local government and capital investment and bonding, and housing, of course, and the tax forfeit legacy, which is still a challenge for us as well, and of course, the continued support by Rams for the local government aid formula for that to remain a statement, continuing to move forward and build on the law that was passed and the reform that was able to be accomplished by our legislative range delegation, particularly Dave Lysagard. So, but the issue I think is important for us is the broadband piece as well, and if you could just give us a little idea where we're at with broadband coming moving forward, because that really has a significant effect on the city of Virginia. Yeah, broadband is a significant issue across all of the Taconite Assistance Area, especially the hardest of the hard areas that remain unserved. In addition, there are small pockets around and within municipalities that do not have gig service or appropriate wire line service that barely meet the state minimum goal. One of the items to keep in mind is that the federal government has made a large investment in BEAD or bead funding. About $650,000, so a million dollars is coming to the state of Minnesota, and it is yet to be seen how much of that money will make its way north. Rams is engaged with our operating partners who do the work, the line digging, things like that, to raise awareness about the plight and really strategic necessity of getting those targeted dollars to where they are needed most. And if Minnesota is truly serious about that, they will set as a priority the issuance of those funds to greater Minnesota regions, specifically rural St. Louis County and others like it that are under and unserved at this moment. Rams will be engaged with those providers, as we always have been, about raising awareness about the importance of these projects, but there remain some concerns around some of the restrictions around bead funding, and will those providers bite? You know, it remains to be seen, but we have to have a continued dialogue so that if adjustments are able to be made long-term, we do make them as a state.
Thank you, Paul. Any questions from the elected body? There's a lot of things, and I had the, I was fortunate to be able to discuss this at length with you and the other mayors on Friday with respect to what the legislative priorities are and how it affects not only the region, which of course Rams represents, all those municipalities, as you mentioned earlier in your opening statement, but the issues that really are, that really will directly affect the city of Virginia as we move forward. I know that you will be working hand-in-hand with your lobbying group and ours, and I know that Mr. Jerick will be reaching out to you, hasn't already done so, to talk about some of those things and coordinating a collaborative effort in order to help move forward some of the issues that we have moving forward. Primarily, one of our major bonding issues is still hanging in from the last bonding session, and we've talked about this before, is the $1.7 million that is laid out there in the bonding bill for our city hall upgrades, you know, moving forward with the energy pieces of the steam conversion. And I know this is a big issue that we're going to be prioritizing for the city of Virginia in this next legislative session, whether it's bonding or not, to find some cash opportunities or some help through the Energy Committee or somewhere to help us defer or lessen the burden of the costs associated with steam conversion in the downtown area. There are some significant buildings that need steam conversion, both residential and commercial, but with the utilities will be coming to give a presentation to our Virginia Economic Development Board this next, the next Thursday we have this. But part of that is, I'll just give you one example, we talked about this before, and for the, for information for the general public, you know, some of these steam conversions are very expensive, as some of you already know, but particularly the commercial piece. And so, we have some buildings in Virginia, not just city hall, and not just the library, and not just the Washington, which are significant investments, but it's the commercial tax base that is going to be adversely affected to try to find the funding for that. And there is a, an entity that's refurbished a new school on Third Avenue South, and it's like a three or a four-story building, and the estimated cost, at least to this date, is right around $946,000 to convert. No business can afford to do that, and so by looking for other ways and other mechanisms in place to move forward, so steam conversion from steam to gas is really a high priority for us in this, so let's, next legislative session, as you are well aware, and we'll be working hand-in-hand to try to find some way to defer some of that cost associated with those different businesses, so. And does anybody have any other questions for Mr. Peltier? As we have this document about what we're moving forward, and we urge you to, if you have any questions or comments, we certainly can either contact me, and we can have it at the mayor's meeting, or you can contact Rams directly. You have Mr. Peltier's contact number here. Any questions or comments you have, how we're going to move forward with this. But the legislative session begins, when is it, January 20th? No?
The previous week.
Previous week, okay, the previous week. I took a shot. Okay, the previous week. And I'll be down there for that, and probably see you down there as well, so. Any other things you would like to disseminate to us, Mr. Peltier?
Yes, I'd like to draw your attention to the continued need for vigilance around EMS issues around our region. It was just released today from Dylan Ferguson, the EMS fellow who's leading that, that the city of Virginia, their numbers, along with everyone else's numbers, about compensation for EMS aid is released, and so I encourage you to make yourself aware of that, as I know you're tracking it, but that's one small step in the right direction. We have a large federal component to this, that the state has done really what it can to a large degree, and keeping the eye on the prize that Medicare and Medicaid payer mix is roughly 70% of our regional non-critical access hospital payer mix, and they reimburse it 30 cents on the dollar. That is just unsustainable for regional hospitals, and so there needs to be a state fix on many things, but there's also revealing that the federal component has a role to play as well, so.
So, thank you.
Look to our federal partners to make some headway on that.
And thank you, Paul, for that. You know, essentially, it's not a critical access hospital, so they get 30 cents on the dollar as opposed to the, so that's an issue. Number two, and I know we talked at the mayor's meeting about the fact that you might be wanting, looking at, in the embryonic stages of pulling together some kind of a coalition to, to, to make a trip out to Washington, DC, to try to look at some way in which the Medicare and Medicaid reimbursement can change for whatever we have moving forward, so we look for some, for some additional information that's coming from Rams in the future, so thank you for that.
That is certainly an area of focus, and trying to build the coalition around that. I would also draw the attention to the regional collaborative work that the city of Evolus, city of Virginia, city of Ely have done on drafting Rams into the Brownfields discussion about how we bring that money home for the benefit of our region. Redeveloping what we have is our charge, and opportunities are out there, and currently the state of Minnesota is neglecting the Iron Range, and so we will continue to raise that flag, so. Thank you for your work and involvement.
And I know that you, I didn't see it in the packet, but at the mayor's meeting, you showed that map of the brownfield funds that have been allocated.
Yeah.
Throughout the state of Minnesota.
Subscribe to the Rams newsletter, you'll get it.
Okay, looking forward to that. It's an eye-opener.
Yeah.
It's an eye-opener, so. I know that our city staff, particularly Britt, has been working very hard to try to get some brownfield grants. We have been successful, so with the help of Rams, and you're on it, to try to, you know, focus on some ability for us to glean some of that funding for brownfields, so.
I just want to say one thing before I go. If you don't have, if you have any questions or concerns, please feel free to text me, reach out to me, email me. You all have my card in the packet here, and if you don't ask Counsel Freedleeb or any of your city staff, you have great city staff. Jenny, Britt are fantastic to work with. I work with them on a weekly basis on things, so thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Paul. Mr. Peltier, thank you. Anybody else who is not scheduled to appear, I would give you another opportunity to step forward and address the council. Does anyone wish to address the council moving forward? Okay, thank you, seeing none. We'll go to number seven, unfinished business. The clinic lease. Is the ore in the water? Are we moving forward, Brian? Legal.
Thank you, Mayor. I do believe we continue to move forward. We have been continuing to stay in contact with the leadership over at the hospital, but I don't have any concrete updates to report at this time.
Thank you. And when does that clinic lease officially, the bond officially paid off, Sheri, is within the next year, 2025?
Oh, no. The bond itself will go for another five years.
Another five years.
Lease agreement, that...
I'm sorry, I meant the lease agreement, yes, thank you.
Okay, the lease agreement is June 20, June 20 of 25.
June of 2025 is the lease, and yeah, thank you for the clarification. Okay. Okay, any other questions, comments about the clinic lease? Moving on to item eight, discussion items. Item 8.1 is approve the 2025 liquor licenses and Sundays. Item 8.1A, Alan Burton doing business as Riders on Main with no Sunday liquor license.
Approve.
Moved by Counsel. Do we do it all at one? This is really very efficient. Thank you, we do it all at one, Pam. Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you. Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Okay. Item 8.1B, Martinis Incorporated doing business as Tommy's Rainy and Lakes Saloon and Deli. Item 8.1C, Lozoya LLC doing business as Casadori's Restaurant. Item 8.1D, Flamers Incorporated doing business as Flamers. Item 8.1E, Grandma's Virginia Incorporated doing business as Grandma's Saloon and Grill. 8.1F, Peterson's Properties Virginia, Inc. doing business as Pappers. 8.1G, K-Cor Incorporated doing business as Mel's Sports Page Bar and Snickers Pizza. Item 8.1H, Virginia Bowling Gardens LLC doing business as Virginia Bowling Gardens. And a latecomer, item 8.1I, Kurchowski Incorporated doing business as Copper Nickel, to approve them contingent upon submitting the required paperwork.
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Counsel Paulson. Is there support?
Support.
By Counsel Motley, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. Item 8.3, approve the 2025 wine and strong beer license contingent upon receiving the required paperwork. Item 8.3A, Laurentian Arts and Cultural Alliance doing business as the Lyric Center for the Arts. And item 8.3B, the Sugar Shack Company doing business as the Sugar Shack. Looking for council approval. Moved by Counsel Freedleeb to approve. Is there support?
Support.
By Counsel Paulson. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Item 8.4, approve the 2025 off-sale licenses. Item 8.4A, Menu Corporation doing business as Rocket Liquor. Item 8.4B, Super One Liquor LLC doing business as Super One Liquor. And item 8.4C, K-Cor Incorporated doing business as Mel's Sports Page Bar and Snickers Pizza.
Remove.
Move to approve by Counsel Motley. Is there support? By Counsel Freedleeb, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor... Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Item 8.5, approve the 2025 club licenses. Item 8.5A, The Northern Club Incorporated doing business as The Northern Club. Item 8.5B, American Legion Post 239 doing business as Pratt-Volden Post. And item 8.5C, the benevolent protection of the Elks Lodge Number 1003 doing business as the Virginia Elks Club.
Moved.
Moved to approve by Councilor Motley, is there support? By Councilor Friedle, is there any further discussion? A hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Item 8.6, approve the 2025 3.2 licenses. Item 8.6A, Holiday/Corman LLC doing business as Circle K, Number 2746041. Item 8.6B, Miners Incorporated doing business as Super One Foods North. Item 8.6C, Miners Incorporated doing business as Super One Foods South. Item 8.6D, Capital Retail LLC doing business as Joe's Quick Mart.
To move.
Moved to approve by Councilor Friedle, is there support?
Support.
By Councilor Motley, is there any further discussion? A hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Item 8.7 is adopt the resolution to approve the Stuff the Ambulance program with the various EMS and police.
So moved.
Moved to approve by Councilor Motley, is there support?
What's the date on that?
Support by Councilor Friedle, further discussion, what's the date on the Stuff the Ambulance? November 29th and 30th? November 29th and 30th? Bring cash, toys, any items that can be used, is that correct? Thank you, gentlemen, for, and, gentlemen, thank you for all the employees and everybody's going to move into Stuff the Animals, Stuff the Animals. Stuff the ambulance. I'll bring some stuffed animals, okay? All right, thank you. All right. We vote on that? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries, that was good humor, okay. Item 8.8, planning and zoning meeting that was held on November 18th, 2024. Consider the variance from Rockstep Virginia LLC, 8.8A. Approve an additional 77.3 foot square feet of signage for a total of 141.34 square feet of signage. Take these individually? Okay, thank you. And then along with that, item 8.8B, approve three additional signs totaling four at the principal entrance of the facility.
Moved to approve.
Moved to approve by Councilor Paulson and supported by Councilor Johnson. Any further discussion? Glad to move forward. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Anything you'd like to add, as a representative of Rockstep? I please state your name for the record and welcome, thanks for attending.
Thank you, Jody Vest with Rockstep Capital, representing the Uptown Virginia, which many of you know who have been here for years and years and years, formerly the Thunderbird Mall. We would like to express thanks once again, Mr. Mayor, councilors, and city of Virginia staff, for your continued support in our redevelopment efforts of the Uptown Virginia property. And it's through your support with requests like this that ensure that we are able to move forward on our redevelopment efforts. In fact, this was a contingency of getting this approved in order to move forward with our current plans. So once again, we thank you for your continued support, and we're going to be bringing good things to the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Jody, can you give a little hint or not? Not yet.
I will say that I appreciate the curiosity, and I understand the question, but I do have to reserve confidentiality for specific reasons.
Of course, understandably so, thank you. Item 8.9, adopt a resolution approving the final, final estimate, number two, to Northern Constructors in the amount of $7,554.95 for the 18th Street Culvert Project.
So moved.
Moved to approve by Councilor Motley, is there support? By Councilor Friedle, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Item 8.10, adopt a resolution approving the final estimate, number three, to Utility Systems of America in a amount of $40,345.92 for the sewer rehab project phase one.
Excuse me, Mayor.
Yes.
One comment on this, we have not received the required paperwork from the contractor, so we need to just approve contingent upon that.
Would the recommendation be to approve contingent upon it, or defer it until they do pay and then bring it up at the next meeting?
I'll let Mr. Reed answer that.
Matt, Mr. Reed from SCH, thank you.
Good evening, thank you, Mayor. I would recommend just approving a contingent upon, I'd expect to see that paperwork any day now, so then we can just make the payment once, once we have it, so.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate that.
So moved with contingency?
Councilor Friedle moves to approve contingent upon providing the proper paperwork, is there support? By Councilor Johnson, is there any further discussion? Councilor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. Where, where is this, the location of this activity? Was this by, on, off Second Avenue and?
Matt, Mr. Reed?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, Councilor Paulson, this is the storm sewer project down right by the Public Safety Building.
Perfect, thanks, Pam.
Yep, you're welcome.
Thank you. Did you vote on that? Moved and supported, is there any further discussion? A hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Item 8.11, discuss the proposed purchase of the Pierce Velocity 100-foot ladder truck with an estimated price of, is this correct, $2 million? Okay, so in your packet is, the number has changed, and that number is? Looking for council action? Councilor Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor, I think that during the public meeting, we did demonstrate the need to start working on this, knowing that there is no financial consequences should we not be able to come up with the money in the next four to five years. And it is, we do need it, so I will make a motion to authorize staff to move forward with the purchase of the ladder truck.
A motion by Councilor Johnson to approve and move forward with the purchase of the Pierce Velocity 100-foot ladder truck with the estimated price of $2,478,079, is there support?
Support.
Okay, support by Councilor Friedle, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries, thank you, we have five votes, so we can approve. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I don't know if this would be prudent in a motion or not, or if we even need one, but is it possible that we could have city staff exercise all ways possible to try to fund this ladder truck outside of taxpayer dollars, if possible? And would I need a motion for that?
Make a motion to authorize city staff to seek funding from outside sources, that would be helpful.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
Motion by Councilor Motley to, to direct staff to seek funding in every possible nook and cranny to find funding to help offset the costs associated with the purchase of the new ladder truck. Supported by Councilor Paulson, is there any further discussion? Councilor Johnson?
I would ask that we reach out to friends of public safety, they did a great job when we were lobbying for the building, maybe they can do what they did last time and help us out as well, thank you.
Thank you, moved and supported, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. We have a gentleman in the back. Did you have something on the city council, or are you just here to, to listen, do you have any? Mr. Mary, you were on here. Is this relative to a zoning issue?
On the agenda.
Your representative isn't here, well, you know, I think you should, huh? Just come forward if you would, Mr. Mary, I've been to your house, that's why I know you, I think some of us do already, and you were at the last, the last meeting with respect to the planning and zoning, but I think we already approved that, did we not? I think we approved your, your request at their last meeting. So, yeah, and so I just wondered if you had any other questions or comments, you may not have been aware that it was approved, but it was. Yeah, we, it was approved, move to move forward, yes, sir. And if, one moment, Councilor Friedle.
So the variances were approved, and the permitting has not yet been approved?
Jenny?
Thank you, Mayor, yes, Councilor Friedle, the variances were approved, and council had final approval of that at their last council meeting, and it's my understanding you are working with engineering on some of the aspects of the permitting process? Okay. Yep, I can have staff reach out to you tomorrow for sure.
And you're ready to move forward, Mr. Mary? Thank you, Scott Mary. Thank you very much, you too. Okay, thank you. Item nine, committee reports, committee, the whole meeting that was held on November 19th, 2024, we'll turn this, a part of our council meeting over to our city administrator, Britt C. Bennett.
Thank you, at the committee of the whole meeting on November 19th, Georgia Ilertson from Northland Securities was present, he did discuss the purchase of the ladder truck and how some financing options the city could use for us to purchase the truck. With recommendation, George suggested that rather than doing a GO bond or taking out a lease or a direct loan, we'd rather do a direct loan through USDA, because the advantage is USDA has lower interest rates, at this moment they're 3.75, but if they go down at all any time between now and the time we take purchase, we can lock in a lower rate. And the other great thing about USDA is we don't take the funding until we need it, until the truck comes, so we have basically a four-year timeline to find other funding, and we only need to take what we need, we wouldn't need to take the whole dollar more, which is a great thing. We had a lot of discussion, a lot of great questions, it was a really good discussion, and I really appreciate George being there. And right behind George, we had Steve Sharf from Baker Tilly there to discuss our stormwater sewer rates and the sanitary sewer rates and the studies that were completed. Stormwater sewer rates need an increase because of the existing debt service payments that we have for the street projects we've already completed, and then we tried to anticipate additional funding needs for future capital purchases. After discussion, it was moved and supported to direct staff to modify the resolution that was proposed for stormwater rate increases using the option number two, with an additional 50 cents per month in your pack, 50 cents per month added to the suggested amounts in option two, so in your packet, you will see the updated rates with the updated resolution.
Thank you. So as you will purview that, I took a look at it earlier today, so looking for council questions, comments, or actions with respect to the request to adopt the resolution for the fee increase. Councilor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor, and this was also one of the meetings I wasn't able to attend, but when I listened, I just, I guess I had a couple of questions, so one rate is for the storm sewer, and the other rate is for?
Sanitary.
Sanitary sewer, both, the recommendation is both will be increasing, and the rates are increased in the packet here. I think there was some correspondence, and I believe it was probably from Baker Tilly, or maybe it was George Ilertson, I'm not sure, that, that we're spending more, the expenditures are more than we're making on interest in that fund, is that correct, Sherri?
Sherri?
No, I would have to get more clarification on what you're talking about, but I didn't get that from George.
It was in an email, it was prior to even the committee of the whole meeting, I think it was the whole study from Baker Tilly, and it was something, and maybe I'm, I'm saying it wrong?
Yeah, yeah, we, our expenditures starting in '25 are going to be approximately $174,000 just from the storm sewer fund, and we're only taking in $25,000 a year, so we've got a very large disparity, and if you recall, the stormwater fund was just started, we just recently implemented that fee, just as a way.
Right, because we had never been doing that.
We had never been, and we didn't know what, what we needed to do the fees, we didn't know what we needed, but now that we know that in '25, we're going to need $174,000, we, the $5 first level for residential was the bare minimum to get us to the $175,000. After discussion at the committee of the whole, we agreed to go up an extra 50 cents to get us to almost $230,000, so we'll have a little bit of a cushion for any capital improvements such as that tin whistle we just replaced on Second Avenue.
Okay, got it.
Those are the things that are eating that money.
And so, and so just so I'm understanding too, and maybe even this will help the general public, what, does the city pay this, so what you're saying is we're not, we weren't taking in enough, who are we paying that out to, is that for the projects we're doing?
Correct.
Or does that go to the public utilities?
Nope, it's collected through the public utilities, and then gets paid to the city, and we pay our debt service with it.
Okay.
And we also have, like I mentioned, the Culvert on 83rd Street North, the Second Avenue storm sewer project that Matt just discussed.
So the projects that we're taking on, we were not covered in terms of what?
Correct.
The taxpayers would, were actually paying, or hadn't even been paying?
Correct, because when we did the street projects, it was, it's that delicate balance between how much do you want to put on the general levy for everybody to pay, or how much do you want to specially assess, or do you want the funds to balance themselves that everybody pays their utility fees? And when we did that, we tried to find the way to keep that special assessment low.
Okay.
And keep your general levy low, and the best way to do that is for rates and fees so that everybody's paying for the portion of these things that we all use, that, that tin whistle that we have on Second Avenue that we did, that's the, I mean, it's a very, very large main that takes all the stormwater from that side of town, so it's hard to pinpoint one property that does it, it's everybody that uses it. That's the theory behind it.
Thank you so much, I really appreciate that explanation, and I'm sorry that I missed that meeting, but I think that's a really good explanation to the general public as well, so, thanks again, appreciate that, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilor Paulson. Any other questions, comments from the council? Then we're looking for council action on item 9.1A.
I'll move the resolution.
Councilor Motley moves to approve the resolution regarding the fee increase for the storm sewer charge as proposed for option two, is there support? Is there support? Is there support, supported by Councilor Johnson? Is there any further discussion? Councilor Motley?
Quick question, will this be revisited every year, or is this just?
That is the suggestion that Steve Sharf from Baker Tilly did mention, is that this is something you should be doing annually, if not annually, at least, at least every three years, so we only plan this out for one year with the, it's going to force us to look at it again next year, so. Right, thank you, Britt, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilor Motley. Moved and supported, is there any further discussion? A hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. After the storm sewer discussion, we had discussion regarding the sanitary sewer rates. Over the years, it did show in the study that was presented that the trend between expenses and revenues show that there's a decline in positivity, thus the sewer fund is essentially losing money. It is, has always been historically a rather healthy fund, but of course, again, we have some projects that have been utilizing the money from that fund as we're trying to not use levy to pay for projects. It was therefore moved and supported to approve the resolution for the rate increase to the sewer, sanitary sewer rates for fiscal year '25 and '26, again with the option to visit again at the end of '26 for '27, we'll try to get on a better cycle to get these, to look at these rates and update them as needed.
Okay, thank you, Britt.
I will move the resolution.
Councilor Johnson moves to approve the resolution adopting the rate increase for the sanitary sewer rate for fiscal year 2025 and to 2026, is there support? Support by Councilor Freedley. Is there any further discussion?
Mayor, if I may also point out, the sanitary sewer fund is not just a sanitary sewer main, it also is the wastewater treatment plant. So we did include in the estimates for the fee structure that's proposed for '25 and '26, a planned upgrade that we do know we need. So we do have that built in there, so we should be good for the next couple of years for the wastewater treatment plant and the road projects.
Thank you, Britt. Has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing, Councilor Paulson?
Thank you. Could I just get a clarification on the rate under, some page 75, rate service charge, and then charge per unit? What, and then it says current, then in 2025, then in 2026. So do you add those two together?
There's the service charge is a flat monthly fee that's charged to everybody. So everybody gets that flat month, per month, the 510 right now. It'll go up to 627 per month.
So that increase by a dollar and?
Seventeen cents.
Seventeen cents. Okay.
And then the charge per unit's based on your water consumption? So, and it's, I was trying to look really fast here. I don't remember if it's 5,000 gallons or 6,000 gallons as a unit. That is a fee you can adjust. It's an adjustable fee. Unlike the stormwater fee is a flat fee per property, the sanitary sewer fee is a fee that is adjustable by the amount of usage a person has on their property.
Okay, thank you for that. I appreciate it.
If you're very low water consumption, you could be just paying the 1283. If you have a very large family, you might be paying double that or slightly more than that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Paulson. It has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Mr. Matt Reed, our engineer of record from S C H, discussed the change order for the 2023 street improvement project for the 10th Avenue West and 13th Street South portion. The plans for the replacement of the storm sewer in the intersection of 12th Avenue and 13th Street were not planned, but once the crews opened the intersection, they found the condition of the infrastructure was so bad that they could not proceed. So the decision was made to replace the structures while they were there, as it would be more expensive to replace them in the future and have to remove all the by two minutes again and shut the intersection down again. Therefore, it was moved and supported to approve change order number six for the 2023 street reconstruction project with an increase for the contract of Casper Construction by $30,516.83.
So moved. Moved to approve by Councilor Johnson. Is there support?
Or?
By Councilor Freedley. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
It was moved and supported to approve the renewal of the professional services agreement with S C H for the city engineer of record for a three-year term.
So moved. Moved to approve by Councilor Johnson. Is there support? By Councilor Freedley. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
A discussion regarding the request from the library to approve the resolution to apply for grant funding from C D B G for the library restroom accessibility project. When the steam conversion is to be completed at the library, it's going to have to require that the bathrooms be remodeled, relocated, as it will cut out into a portion of the bathroom space. Therefore, it is a great time for us to look at finding funding to assist with the ADA compliance portion of the bathrooms. So this would be our intent of as our first grant to apply for, to fund the library restroom accessibility project. Thus, it was moved and supported to approve the resolution to apply for the C D B G grant for the library restroom accessibility project.
So moved. Moved to approve by Councilor Johnson. Is there support?
Or?
By Councilor Motley. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
It was moved and supported to approve the lease with the state of Minnesota and the City of Virginia for a continued placement of the monitoring equipment that is on top of City Hall.
So moved. Moved to approve by Councilor Johnson. Is there support?
Or for discussion?
Support by Councilor Freedley for discussion. Further discussion, Councilor Freedley?
Monitoring equipment for what?
Air monitoring, air quality.
Air quality. For the City of Virginia.
For the whole city. Yeah, they're actually looking, it's nothing we produce, but they, they're looking at everybody around us, basically.
Whose equipment?
The state of Minnesota.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
No further items from the meeting.
Thank you. Okay, move to item number 10, commission liaison reports. Is there any council that would like to give a commission liaison report this evening? Seeing none. We'll move on to department head reports. Any department head want to give a report? We'll go from left to right. Britt, anything else to add under department heads?
It is Thanksgiving on Thursday, so city offices will be closed Thursday and Friday. We have been getting calls regarding garbage pickup. So if you are a commercial customer who normally has garbage scheduled for Thursday, which would be Hoover Road and Industrial Park area, your garbage is picked up on Wednesday. And if you're a residential garbage customer who normally has garbage on Thursday, which is Thanksgiving, we'll pick you up on Friday, which is North Side and Midway. So just take note if you have garbage to be picked up, especially the residential with individual cans in Midway, we'll get you on Friday.
And thanks to Chris Johnson from the Public Safety, supporting that out to us. So thank you for that, Britt.
Yep.
Okay, anything from legal?
Nothing from legal, Mayor.
Thank you. Anything from the clerk's office?
No, there is not, Mayor. Thank you.
Finally calming down after the big election season. Anything from finance? Sheri?
Yes, sir. I want to respectfully request a waiver of the written resolution. I'm requesting transferring funds from the 2024 Public Safety Building Bond Funds that are currently invested with the 4M to cover pay estimate number five and number six that was approved earlier in this meeting, of $4,232,129 to the general fund.
Okay, thank you. $4,232,129.
Correct.
And this money was placed in that form investment fund to glean some interest. And now that we're going to, now we're going to start to pay our bills, we're taking that money out to pay.
Right. We do have some liquid cash, they call it, in the money market, which is a little over a million in there. But we will have to probably check out an earlier CD to cover this.
But it's all recoverable under the bond?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Paulson?
I'll move to approve the transfer.
Thank you. Councilor Paulson moves to approve the transfer. Is there support?
Or?
Support by Councilor Freedley for discussion. Brian from legal.
Thank you, Mayor. Just as a point of order, if we're moving, if we're moving money from one fund to another, well, actually, we'll need two motions. We'll need a motion pursuant to section 406 of our charter, which allows us to waive a written resolution. And then once, and that motion has to pass unanimously. And then secondarily, we can make a motion pursuant to section 708 of the charter, which allows a funds transfer, funds transfer between accounts at the, at the city.
Okay, thank you.
So I'll amend my motion to waive the resolution first. To waive the written resolution.
Councilor Paulson moves to raise, waive the written resolution with respect to this transfer request for funds. Is there support? Support by Councilor Freedley. Further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Okay, the next motion.
I'll move to support the transfer.
Councilor Paulson moves to approve the transfer, the funds from the form of investment for the payment for the public safety building in the amount of $4,232,129. Is there support?
Or?
By Councilor Motley. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Jenny, anything from permitting, planning? Nothing. Okay. Thank you. No department heads in the audience. Move down to number 12, council reports. Any council want to give a report this evening? Councilor Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm very happy to report that on Monday at the Iron Trail Motors Event Center, the Youth in Action held their annual conference. There were 315 students present this year for the first time. They actually had to turn away students because they were that full. It was a great day watching all of these young people from seventh grade through 12th grade, all over, from all over Duluth. It's not, no longer Iron Range Youth in Action, it's just Youth in Action, and they've expanded to South St. Louis County. The theme this year was called, was create compassion, resilience, engage, advocacy, thoughtfulness, and empower. And the whole conference is put on by students. They plan the workshops, they present the workshops, they find the presenters, and it was, it was great. There were numerous vendors there for information for students who are graduating. And the Iron Trail Motors event staffs were amazing. They were able to go from a full ballroom to three classrooms in a matter of 10 minutes. So that was all hands on deck, including Brian and whoever else was there. So good job on that. I'm happy to report that Frozen Junior is over. That consumed our families' lives and a few other people who were in the audience earlier for all last week. There were four performances for a total of over 900 attendees. That's 50 students from local schools, not only Rockridge, but Mount Iron Buell, Marquette. And I think we may have even had somebody from Asabi East. And it was great to see those folks really give it it all. And I just want to thank everybody, Pam, especially for coordinating lineup at the parade on Saturday. Again, even though it was a little bit chilly, it was a phenomenal turnout, and it was nice to see businesses downtown open and selling some stuff. The fireworks are great. My favorite time is always that pause after the grand finale, when you can hear the whole town cheering and clapping and beeping their horns. So thank you to the council, too, for continuing to approve that, that winter fireworks. It really is a fun thing, and people come from all over because it's winter this. So those are my things tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilor Johnson. Just to tack on real quick, thanks to Revive Virginia and the Essential Community Health, Community Foundation, and the Virginia Community Foundation for the collaborative and putting the festival trees together. It was awesome. I never seen so many people in one place playing bingo for a purse. It was unbelievable. And the drinks were flowing heavily. So, but thanks for everything. That was very, that was a great event. Okay. Anything else to come before the council before we adjourn? Seeing none. Thank you very much. We will adjourn our council meeting until December 10th, 2024, at 5:30 PM at the council chambers. And just a reminder, we'll be setting the levy at that particular time as well. We stand adjourned. Good night.